I'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. It's Monday, October 24th, 2011. Dr. Richardson, are there agenda changes?
Yes, if you'll notice in your table file. We have information now in terms of the 2011-13 agreement with the Northfield Education Association. That agreement has been ratified by the Education Association and is now ready to be approved on the agenda this evening. There's also a copy of the joint news release that was prepared by District Administration and the NEA members for release as soon as that agreement is approved by the Board. We also have several items of personnel, terms of appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, resignations, and leave of absence. And we also have a gift agreement from the Northfield Softball Association, who donated a significant sum of money, $24,700, to support the improvement of softball fields located in Northfield High School.
Very good. Excellent. There's no objection. We'll add those items to the agenda as we move forward. We have opportunity now for public comment, and this is chance for members of the school district to address the Board. We ask that you speak from the podium, that you state your name, the group you represent, if you are here speaking on behalf of a group, and that you limit your remarks to three minutes. Is there anybody here who wishes to address the Board? Ray?
I have a little out of breath because I just ran.
It's a good thing you made it in time.
Yeah, there's a lot of combines on the road right now. So anyways, my name is Ray Fudray, and I represent the Northfield Education Association as President. And we've voted today on the tentative settlement, which I think will come before the Board, and I just wanted to say it's been coming into this probably one of the most difficult sessions that we've had as far as the obstacles in front of us from the district standpoint, from the teacher's standpoint, coming off of a couple of years of freeze and then, sorry, I'm just really tired. Coming off a couple of years of freeze and the issues at the, as far as salaries and the issues at the state level, there's just a lot of things to deal with. Some of our members, if they were hired four years ago, were frozen for, have been frozen their entire time they've been in the district, and that's a very difficult position for them to be in. And with all of that, we were able to conclude our deliberations with the Board, and I really felt like the concerns we had were heard, and we worked very cooperatively, I think, to come to something that would work for not the teachers, not the students, not the community, but all of those as a whole, not any individual part of that. And I'm happy to report that we did ratify that this afternoon, and I just have an official letter I wanted to give you for that. And thank you to members of the Board who were part of that, members who were not a part of that. It was just, you know, it's not necessarily the most fun thing we do, but as Mr. Stratmon commonly says and reminds us, that's where we solve a lot of problems. That's where we really make, kind of get the things in a place where we can talk about them and come to agreement on what's best for all of us and for the community as a whole, and we really feel like we've done that. Obviously, you know, we wanted a whole lot more, no, just kidding. It just worked out really well and given all the circumstances, and we hope to move forward positively for the year. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. And thank you very much for your leadership for the, on the teacher's side, those negotiations. I think, as you say, they did go very, very well, and they were, I think, would be a model, perhaps, to some other governing bodies for how people can advocate rigorously on opposite sides and still come to consensus that works for both, and so I thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else who wishes to address the Board? All right, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Excuse me, I have a cold, so. Board members, you have in your packet the minutes of the regular meeting held on October 10th, 2011. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Looked by Jeffis there, or second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular Board meeting held on October 10th, 2011, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Onto announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, I have several items of announcement for this evening. First of all, it was recently announced that Northfield was again selected as one of the nation's 100 Best Communities for Young People, and Marnie, I don't know whether you are here by yourself or whether we have some students that are also coming?
I think my boys are at play practice.
That's kind of what I figured.
Because two of the members of Mayor's Youth Council are also leads in the upcoming story of Westside Story, and, that's not Peter Duba. So, on behalf of the Mayor's Youth Council, the kids did find out last week that we were one of 100, again, 100 Best Community for Young People. With this award comes some nice recognition and also a $2,500 grant that we are to use towards helping to close the achievement gap and increase graduation rates. And since the, one of the strengths of our proposal always is things like the Torch Program and PLUS and those kind of extra programs for students, I think we're well positioned to find places to use that $2,500. Once again, one of the pieces that the committee especially recognized, that the application was completely written by the students of Mayor's Youth Council with very little input from Zach Prude and myself. They do it all, and we do our best to keep our hands in our pocket and our mouth shut and let it go in as their proposal. So, on behalf of the Mayor's Youth Council kids, we wanted to bring the plaque and present it to you because it is on behalf of them and the great support that you give these kids and the programs that we have in Northfield that we're able to achieve this once again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marnie. Thanks for all you do for our students.
Okay, and this is now third year?
Third time.
Third time.
That's exciting.
So, again, I think very impressive in terms of the work of the kids.
Yep.
And very impressive in terms of the programs that we're providing and that the community is providing to help support the students of the district.
And I just look at the folks in the audience here, and I think it's a wonderful cross-representation of all the different ways that this community supports young people, from the traditional public schools to the Area Learning Center, to our charter schools, the Summer Plus Program, the involvement of the community at large in its interest and support of the schools, and it's great to see it recognized like this once again. Okay, very nice.
All right. The second item, also, Marnie, has something to do with. That's the Torch Team. They were recently awarded a $48,000 Intervention for College Attendance Grant from the Minnesota Office of Higher Education. This is the fourth time that the Northfield Public Schools has received this two-year grant, which has provided funding over the last six years. Funding will be used again to support the Torch Program with the middle school and the high school. And again, we, I hope, have sung praises of the work of Torch over the years, but again, remembering that this is the organization that took us from having about a 36% graduation rate for Latino students back as late as 2005 to a 97% graduation rate for Latino students in 2011. So, pretty impressive and something that I think there would be a lot of districts in the state, a lot of districts in the country, that would love to be able to say that about a program that they're supporting. And again, it's good old hard work and focusing on kids as individuals and helping them to see a reason for graduation and a reason for learning that will take them beyond high school, and so it's been a very, very positive piece. The third thing we'd like to announce is that Northfield was chosen to participate in this assistive technology team project that's sponsored by the Minnesota Department of Education. This is a team of special education teachers, related service personnel, who'll be receiving nine days of training to develop and enhance services to meet the needs of children and youth with disabilities who would benefit from using assistive technology. The training topics include collaborative assessment for assistive technology, assistive technology and high stakes assessments, consideration and documentation of assistive technology needs, and collaboration for implementation of assistive technology programs. Team members include Renee Christensen, Kathy Lean, Gary Lewis, Stephanie Mahal, John Schnorr, and Greg Sumner. And so, again, a group that I'm sure will benefit greatly and be able to bring the skills that they developed right back to the classrooms to support our kids. And then finally, Erin Mayberry, Community Services Recreation Coordinator, is among only four young adults who've been chosen by the Regional Rotary Club District to participate in a global study exchange in Brazil next spring. So she will be in Brazil, working with a team there, and again, that's a great honor. We actually have two Rotarians, Rotarian who's going to lead the team, Vicki Deli, who also coordinates and works with our Foreign Exchange Student Program through Rotary as well as Erin. So again, a great honor for her to be able to participate in that this next spring. So again, some good things going on in the district.
Very exciting. Anybody else have things to add? No?
I would say we always have good news at this point in time, but I think this is an exceptional case, and on behalf of the Board, I'd say let's lead in applause for all these one people with not only hard work, but vision.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Our first item for discussion is the Area Learning Center's Professional Learning Communities presentation, and I see many people from the ALC here. Who gets to go first?
Well, I'm going to start out, just to say a few words before I introduce the PLC team, who is all here tonight.
Excellent.
Seems like we were just here, and I was reminded that we were. We were the last group to present in May, and so we are back the first group for this school year. And, you know, when I told the staff that we were going to be presenting first, it was like, okay, and it was like we started right off where we left off in the fall. Working in a PLC, this is a functional professional learning community. I sit in on many of the Wednesday morning meetings, and I am always just pleased with the conversation and the vision that these staff members have, and they're always looking out what's best for our students. What do we need to do to provide them so they're getting a quality education, that we're preparing them to go on from the ALC, that we're preparing them to take the graduation MCA test that they need to pass in order to move on. So the vision is always there, you know, what are we doing, what do we need to improve on, and how do we know it's working? So with that being said, at this time, I'm going to let them explain what they're working on this year, and like I said, we're a small group and we're unique because we are cross-curriculum. We have four different curriculum areas that represent this professional learning community, so that makes it somewhat of a challenge, but they really think outside the box, and I don't think there's any bridge that they're not willing to cross for the kids at the ALC. So with that being said, I'm going to introduce them, and they will come up and tell you what they're working on. So I'll start. We have Darcy Sawyer, who is our social studies teacher. Renee Rasmussen is language arts teacher. They're not shy either, as you can see. Cheryl Matheson is our work seminar and small business, and Bert Bemals is our math teacher. So I'm not sure who's starting first, but Bert? Okay. Oh, Renee, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Pat started us off, and there we are. This is our PLC group. Ta-da! Yes, four fabulous working people. And the first thing we're going to show you this evening is our site improvement plan. This is pretty much the same plan that was in place last year for the ALC. Our number one part that we really try to work on and stress is attendance. It's a big issue with our children, with our particular student population, and so it's something that we continually work towards, strive for better attendance with our students. Kathy does a fantastic job of keeping attendance, keeping us on track. Between Kathy and Pat, they do a really good job of letting the kids know that we're looking for you, we want you in school, we're noticing you, either good or bad, if you're there or not there, and giving them the feedback that they need to make sure that they're in school. And we know that attendance, then, when they're there, they're learning. So if we have them there in the seat, then the academics are going to follow, and then that follows with our number two goal for site improvement is for the increase of math reading and the writing scores, the testing, the state testing that all of our kids have to do and all of our kids have to pass. So if we've got them there in the seat, hopefully they're learning and those scores will increase. We've got a couple of different things that we're trying to work towards, towards that. We started the Read 180 last year. Jackie McKay does a really good job with our kids. Lois Kelly is her parent that works there with her. They do a really good job of trying to help raise those test scores, along with myself with the language arts. We know as an ALC, as a PLC, that it does take a village to raise and educate a child, and we at the ALC are a little village. We each strive and work together to try to get our kids academically where they need to be, and then that goes along with our SMART goal. Because we're different disciplines and we're all trying to work together, one goal that the ALC started working on last year was vocabulary. Vocabulary to increase word recognition, to increase understanding, and hopefully increase those reading scores. So as a team, we decided that we would again start with that, and we're working with vocabulary. And because we are a village, everybody is working with that. The math teacher, the science teacher, language arts, social studies, we are all working on building the kids' vocabulary. So that is our SMART goal at the present time.
And I'm Bert Bemals. I'm the math teacher, and if you were wondering, yes, I'm still here. And the graphics were showing. I have to do the graphics part. So we were wondering this fall, what are we going to do now? We did six different SMART goals last year. Are we going to continue with this root word advancement of vocabulary or not? So we had to figure out, okay, is it working or isn't it working? So what we decided to do, one of the other people's ideas, really good idea, I don't remember whose it was, but we had a pre-test in the spring, and we gave the post-test in the spring, and we decided that we're going to give that same test again to see if there was any retention of those root words over the summer. And we managed, with our fluid population, to come up with only 24 students that took all three tests. And in the first spring pre-test, the total number correct on 20 points each student out of 480 was 114. And when they took the post-test in the spring, it was 186. So when we retested in the fall, we were quite surprised to see that we had a total of 283 correct answers. So a whole lot of things have happened. I'm sure some of it has to do with the vocabulary practice we did, and the idea that these students now, they've heard so much about root words that when they see, when they know it's a root for a word, and they can come up with some words, more and more all the time. The time and setting and outside circumstances really do affect our test scores. They affect everybody's test scores, but they certainly affect ours, and being in the fall probably had something to do with it. These 24 people are people who show up to school every day, probably, so they're probably testing a little better than some of the other ones that didn't take all three tests. And other conclusions we've drawn from this is that the variety of instructional strategies that we have in our classroom, we all do the same 20 words over this little short period of time, really helps them a lot. And the goal is, the number one goal of all this is to pass the reading test, even though I'm the math teacher. We're all working on that. And Darcy's going to talk about attendance.
I have to say something about the root word words. You ever see My Big Fat Greek Wedding and how the father keeps talking about the root words? I think they get a lot of it from us because we'll go, ooh, look at that's a root word. It's kind of funny. So anyway, attendance. So one of the things that we focus on, and Renee brought up, we don't have a specific SMART goal about attendance, but I just want to recap maybe from last spring or what we do now. We have something, a attendance policy, and a certain grading period, if they hit four after four absences in a class, just a class, we have something called like a peel process, and we notice that, and when they're, you know, beyond that, we have this appeal process, like why is your attendance kind of struggling, why are you struggling with your attendance and so forth? So they have to advocate for themselves for that. Another thing that we have for attendance is 15 days in a row if they are there. Each teacher can sign off for that student, and if they reach the 15 days in a row, they're rewarded with a free day, and they love this, they work really hard for it, and you see the attendance increasing because of that reward. Another thing that is brought up before already was parents or guardians are contacted if a student is not in school, and this is any time of the day. So if we notice that they're gone after third period or didn't come back after lunch, we notice that and they're contacted, the parents or guardian or whoever is contacted. And another thing, too, that teachers reward these kids, our students, we give them, some of us give them point systems for just being there, and they like that because it encourages them to come to school, and so each teacher will do it in their own way with that. The other part, did I do the wrong thing? This one?
Yeah.
Okay. Bert. Okay. So our systematic interventions that we have, a lot of challenges that we have toward struggling students who are academically or behaviorally. How do we meet those from the advanced students who are at the college level reading, and how do we work with the kids who are fourth grade reading level? It's a struggle, and it's hard. So a lot of us will do maybe like layered curriculum. Each individual student might have their own curriculum. We know that they go at different paces. Some are advanced and move extremely fast forward, some struggle academically, behaviorally, and so they're all at different pace, and I know each and every one of us will work with them individually like that. Another thing that we do is schoolwork is done in class. We have found out that a lot of kids struggle because of homework. They either couldn't get it in, didn't want to get it in, didn't do it, whatever, so we try to teach during the day. Some of us also work with no due dates. We might have schoolwork that is done within this timeframe, so if I have a project, I might say, okay, I want it within this timeframe, you know, because each kid might work at a different pace. Another thing that we might have will be like a peel process, that they're struggling and they just can't maybe do that assignment, we'll say why, what is going on, what is happening, and do it that way, too. Another thing that we have is a reward system. We have something called Golden Tickets, and students are rewarded for just being great students, and we put them in this drawing, and they might get pop or a gas card or a subway card or whatever, and just encourage them in a positive way with the golden tickets. And, next?
Some of the successful strategies that we have found in teaching the students vocab, one of them is just your basic repetition. Some of the teachers are more creative than the others, and they've come up with visual activities. And the third thing is just helping, is changing the attitudes of the students and helping them see the connection between learning root words, learning vocabulary, how that affects their reading, and how that's going to help them pass the reading test. So it's changing, it's changing students' attitudes. Some of the challenges that we face as a PLC is, number one, our highly mobile population. The group of students that we start with on the first day of the quarter can sometimes not even be close to the same group of kids that we have on the last day of the quarter. Another challenge is the incredible discrepancy in ability and academic achievement within the same group of kids in the same class, could be like this, that, that we are teaching. The other thing is the influences in these kids' lives outside of school, and what an impact that has on them on any given day coming into the school, and an impact that has especially on a test day. And our last challenge is one Pat alluded to earlier. Not one of us teaches the same subject. You know, in other schools or PLCs, our subject oriented, and that's not us. And the awesome thing is that we have found a way to make that, to make that work. And something I want to show that's really cool, you know, we started with vocab last year, and, you know, the first workshop this year was on reading, and partway through, you know, the speaker started talking about the importance of vocab and teaching root words, and you should have seen our staff. We all just kind of looked at each other like, almost wanted to do high fives. And I did. I know we all left there like, man, you know, this is working, and we make this work, and we felt really good. We felt really good about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have time for questions? Anybody have questions for Ellis?
I just had one comment. I wanted to comment on what you presented, and I think looking ahead at what Greenville Park has this in their plan about creating these one-on-one relationships. And what has really struck me is what I've seen at what you do at the Area Learning Center, is you have those relationships with the students, and I think that's so important. I mean, I think it's wonderful what you're doing with vocabulary, but I don't think you can underestimate what you are doing in terms of knowing, you know, this disparity of their academic achievement and those outside influences, and I just really applaud you for what you've done with that connecting to them.
Yeah, I think the, what people maybe don't realize is the Area Learning Center, I think, works with students who face probably the biggest challenges of all the kids in the district, and you do an incredible job with them. And I always look forward to your PLC presentation because I think it is so interesting to see how you find that way to work together towards these goals across the different curricular areas, and it's, especially with this highly mobile population, and again, these students who face such incredibly challenging circumstances. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for your good work.
Could we let Pat brag a little bit on a couple of things?
You bet.
Can you, we'll get you to stand up and brag a little bit about a couple of things?
Well, you bet. What do you want me to brag about?
What's your enrollment this fall?
Pardon me?
What is your enrollment this fall?
I think we're at around...
Today?
Today, I think we are at about 66 students. I have another one starting to, so maybe we're 67, 68, right in there.
And again, if we go back five or 10 years in the ALC, oftentimes we would start the year with?
Well, even, I would say in the last, since my time here, I think we were running around like 50, right around 50. I know when I looked at the numbers, I had my secretary look that up because I knew we had more kids coming this year than we did last year in the fall. So I had her look it up, and I was right. We had 45 students start last fall, or previous year, and this year we had, I believe, 56 started the year, 56 or 57. So it was significant, and we're just continuing to grow.
So one thing is the reputation of our ALC is growing. How many different districts are represented in terms of kids coming into our ALC?
I think this year we probably have three different, besides Northfield, kids that came from three other districts, yeah.
Because again, right now, in terms of available ALCs in other districts, what's probably the next closest ALC?
Well, Terrible would be...
To the south, but as far as to the north?
Lakeville.
Have they got one now yet?
Yeah.
Farmington?
And I'm not sure on that, yeah.
So what we've seen is, I think, word of mouth is how kids tell other kids, this is a good place to go, this is a place where I'm going to learn. How many kids did you have graduate last spring? Remember?
Well, in the school year, I believe we had 38.
38 students.
38 in the spring, and then there was a few more during the school year, some super seniors who were done.
And again, for the most part, these are kids that, without this program, would likely not have stayed in school at all. They might have found GED, or they might have just dropped out and never come back. So we've made a tremendous difference, I think, for those kids. I think the other thing, Pat, I think, as you guys take a look at the program you're doing, I just want to reinforce something, is, you know, we've heard the high school before talk a lot about the... before talk a lot about the concept of being connected, and we've heard HCI talking about connected kids and connectedness. I would say your program basically is the model of how do we connect every single child that comes through the door, every single young adult that comes through the door? How do we help support them? How do we help them get in a place where they can learn? And with a graduation of thirty-nine kids or more this last year, we've had a tremendous impact on the number of kids that are able to go forward and either get into the military, go on to post-secondary programming, go on and get a job, who in many cases would have been in a position where they couldn't have gotten in to the military, they couldn't have gotten a job, they couldn't have gone on to post-secondary education without the ALC being there. So I think there's some really positive things going on, and I think we need to keep beating the drum for the quality of the program that all of you guys are providing. So thank you very much.
And I do have to say, you know, working with the staff, when new kids are coming in or kids come in, there is that connectedness, that the kids know, after they've been there, doesn't take them long to figure out that these people truly care about them, the teachers care about them. And it's through little, you know, just those little things, maybe giving them a golden ticket and telling them, you had a great hour, you did great work, or providing them food, you know, our Backpack Fridays, and just that they know that we do care about them, we bring in clothes if new kids need some shirts or pants or whatever. So the connected is there, and it's truly the staff, every one of them, who works very hard to make sure those kids feel comfortable in coming into our building and to the program.
Thanks so much.
So kudos to them.
Thank you. Okay. Simon Tyler's here with Prairie Creek's, Prairie Creek Community Schools Annual Report, and welcome, Simon.
Thank you. Let me see if I can, if my show up here.
I was going to start out by saying, and you're from Art Tech, right? But he's focused, he's ready to go.
I'm looking for my slideshow.
Yes.
And there we are. Well, Dr. Richardson, School Board, thank you for inviting me in this evening, and thank you for your continued support and oversight of our program. As Dr. Richardson mentioned just now, I'm in a new role here, just in my second month as a Director of Prairie Creek School. Caroline Jones retired last year after long and excellent service to the school, and I've had the good fortune to take over from her role. So I'll be presenting largely about a year I wasn't present for, but I'll do my best to share some highlights with you. I think you've already received a fairly dense annual report from us, and my slideshow is really intended to give you a summary of the contents of that report. Our mission, Prairie Creek, or PCCS for short, is a community school. Prairie Creek is a child-centered school. Prairie Creek is a progressive school, and Prairie Creek aims to make the world a better place. That has been our mission since back in the private school days of the school. A little bit about myself, I know many of you, but for those of you who are not familiar with me, I was the Director at Art Tech for the last three years. I'm also a licensed elementary school teacher, and I'm currently working on my administrator's license through the University of St. Thomas. I will complete that in about a year's time. I've had eighteen years' experience as an elementary school teacher in England, Minneapolis, and Castle Rock. I taught fourth and fifth grade at Prairie Creek for six years prior to becoming the Director at Art Tech, and I received my undergraduate degree from the University of Newcastle upon Tyne, which is in northeast England, and my master's from Mankato, a little closer to here. And I've been Director since July 1st. A little bit about our school demographics, it's just a comparison of the last two years. There's a lot more detail on the school demographics in the report if you need further information. But you can see our enrollment's pretty steady. We're currently, as of today, at a hundred eighty students, which is our capacity. But probably the most notable shift in demographic over the last few years has been the steady increase in the free and reduced lunch. That's maybe a sign of the times, but also perhaps the fact that we grew to a hundred eighty from a hundred twenty students two years ago. And I think with that change, you know, there was a shift in the demographics as well. So that enables us, if we wish to and we intend to this year, to apply for Title I funding. So we'll be developing a Title I program this year, and I may refer to that a little bit as I move forward here. We're a community school, so how our parents feel about our school and how they respond to the mission of the program is extremely important to us, and we complete an annual satisfaction survey of our families. This data is very, very important to us, it's great detail about it in our report, but a few highlights for you, we met a hundred percent of our families who either strongly agreed or agreed to the following statements. My child's happy at PCCS. My child's teacher creates a culture for learning in the classroom. And my child is known by her or his teacher. And just listening to the excellent work of the ALC program before I came up, it really struck me that, just as their relationship-based, ship-based school, so we, obviously with a different context, a different age group, and a different mission, but relationships are enormously important to us. So the validation that children are known by their teachers is important to us. And there's some statistics there on proportion of parents positively responding to four domains that we complete our survey on. A little bit about the school program, just a very broad oversight. We now, since the school grew two years ago, have nine multi-age classrooms, 3K1, 323, and 345. So we've developed fairly secure teams around these combinations. We have specialist teachers in the areas art, music, and Spanish currently, and you can see the student-to-classroom teacher ratio was fairly low, nineteen point seven to one. That ratio doesn't include the work of teaching assistants. We have four teaching assistants as well, and of course, a fairly comprehensive special education team. In addition to that, we provide a lot of other support to the students through parent volunteerism, which is both expected and does occur in the school. And we have some excellent connections with St. Olaf and Carlton Colleges as well to bring tutoring into the classrooms from their students. Academic goals last year. We had two academic goals, which I'm reporting on this evening. And the first was a math goal, and we used our work sampling system last year to assess students in the realm of mathematical thinking. And the staff had worked together, and a lot of this was, you know, information I gleaned coming into the program, but there'd been a real focus on math and intent to identify students who were falling into that category where perhaps they were not identified as having special education needs, but were at risk of not being successful in math. So they were flagged, and we set a fairly aggressive goal of having ninety-five percent of those students moving from not yet to in process or proficient by the spring. As you can see, we just fell very slightly short of that goal. The reading goal, it was to have sixty-six percent of PCCS students in process or proficient on the language and literacy work sampling domain. And that goal was comprehensively achieved with ninety-one point seven percent of students reaching that. I think when we look at the MCA scores on a slide that's coming up, you can see a correlation between that success in our work sampling assessment program and how that correlated to the success in reading on the MCA scores as well. And here they are. We did achieve adequate yearly progress, the AYP standard for last year, and we exceeded the state average in reading and science, but performed below average in math. If you take a look at the table at the bottom, these are aggregate of the grades which were tested last year, and a comparison with the state average and the reading scores. We typically have very high reading scores, and once again, they were very high. And our science scores were very pleasing this year, which was interesting to us, you know, it's a fairly new assessment in the fifth grade of science. And so we'll be tracking that data going forward. I mean, we have very small cell samples, so we tend not to try, we try not to react too wildly one way or the other to the MC assessment scores for small cell samples, but over time, it will be interesting to see how that science, that science snapshot develops. And indeed, we've decided to set a science goal this year so we can see how students are doing in science across the grades K through five, and not just a snapshot in fifth grade, which, you know, ironically, we get that data after our students have transitioned to another school. So it's not really a diagnostic tool. So we've been looking at ways to assess students in science in other ways. I'll get to that more in a minute. As for the math, as you can see, our scores were down from the Minnesota average, and we've taken a look at that data. The third grade math scores were actually slightly above the state average, the third grade. That was interesting data in the light of a lot of the work which had been done in K through three internally with our formative assessment and interventions referenced in the work sampling data. And I think that was evident in the third grade assessment scores. So now we're looking to build on that math work this year across the whole program and support the students in the fourth and fifth grade as well as we move forward. And here we go with our accountability plan for this year. In math, we've set a goal with our work sampling that at least seventy percent of students will be on average proficient by spring in the mathematical thinking domain. One major shift there is that we took out the in-process piece to make this a little more rigorous. The work sampling works off a three-point scale of not yet in-process and proficient. We took the in-process off that target, so we're working a little harder with the students to get them to that higher level of achievement, and anticipate that that will show evidence itself in other assessments as well. In science, our other academic goal, we decided to focus on science, we've been very successful in the reading assessments. We had a rigorous program on writing last year as well. And science is an area where we didn't feel we had really comprehensive data on the students other than in the fifth grade year. So we're going to use our work sampling program, which is aligned to the standards K through five, and really take a close look in our professional development and within our teams to see how students are doing both in the fall and spring according to the life science domain. It's primarily because we're focusing a lot of our professional development work this year about environmental education. We're looking at the way we can create an outdoor classroom in our school and various other initiatives. We had a greening of the school initiative last year. I really want to see how all that work equates to student achievement in the life science strand of the science standards. Non-academic goals, we've got two areas we've decided to focus on. One is technology, in part we're due to prepare a new technology plan for the school going forward. We have a lot of interesting questions philosophically around technology at our small school. There's a, I don't know if you, there's been a lot of really interesting research, articles, and it's a great series in the New York Times right now about students in the digital age. So we've decided to embrace that, develop professional development around what technology is out there, what do we want it to look like as part of our mission as a progressive school, and do some research together, do some reading together, and create a new technology plan, which is really well thought out in regard to how we want to go forward as a school, and frankly, what we can afford to budget as a school in terms of technology. It's an area which is changing so rapidly that we decided to make that our focus. As part of that goal, staff will engage in a minimum of six hours of technology professional development. Our second non-academic goal relates to multi-age education. The multi-age focus of our community has always been part of the school historically, and we hope it will continue to be so. We believe it helps create community and develop relationships amongst the K-5 range. It's an interesting time for the school, interesting time for me coming back. I left the school and there were a hundred twenty students, and came back to school with a hundred eighty students in a beautifully expanded building, which is very exciting, but has posed all sorts of interesting questions for us about how we maintain community, what does the sixty addition of sixty children mean for multi-age connections? How will our children know each other as well as they have in the past? How will the teachers and parents know the children as well as they have in the past? So we decided to make this whole focus one of our academic goals, and really work on some new initiatives. We're trying a multi-age lunch program twice a week where children across the nine classrooms sit together around tables. We made a shift in how our children have their reading buddies together. We've always had a program where the older children read with the younger children once a week, and we've developed cohorts to see if they can create stronger, stronger relationships as they move through the year together. Really collect some data around how that looks in our school and how we want it to continue to look going forward. Innovative programs, of course, as a charter school, we're charged to innovate, it's part of our contract with UA, believe, and I brought to you just a few of the innovations which staff highlighted from last year. Certainly in the area of mathematics, the staff engaged in a lot of professional development last year about how we can generate our own formative assessment tools to identify students who are not meeting numeracy benchmarks. We're going to continue that work this year as part of our academic goal and expand the first year we had of, we had a flag system to help students who we consider to be at risk to tightly manage the data and, in essence, use our own PLC system. We don't formally use the language of PLC, but when our teams meet as 3K1 teachers or 323 teachers, they're doing a lot of the similar work, looking at data, looking at how children learn, but in the context of the mission that we have, the more progressive mission that we have, where we are really seeking to teach math in a different way, and we're apologetic about that, it's a progressive model, we're teaching for understanding. And often, the snapshot of an MCA, although it gives useful data, really doesn't always give us the information, the story behind that child that we're looking for in terms of how they learn and the complexity of how they solve problems or think critically. Great work was done by the staff on that last year, and we're going to continue that work moving forward. There's a big focus on turning the school into a greener school last year. There was a wonderful program that I've been learning about since I came back, where staff and teachers collaborated to write a grant and develop a composting system at the school to reduce the school's waste stream, and the great work from that continues this year. It's an absolute delight to watch the children at lunchtime and the care with which they dispose of their food in the composting bins, and the thought that goes into that. It was a super program. As part of that, the students also designed and planted a garden, which became part of their summer school camp last year as well. Anticipate we'll continue to move forward with that, with that theme. And also, one of those children participated in journaling, they sketched and recorded the natural world. You've been out to the school, and I hope you all have an opportunity to do that this year. We're really blessed to be in this just beautiful environment, and we're eager this year to make the most of that. And the staff all voted early in the year that they wanted to do the journaling again and keep that emphasis going with the children. For the project process, we've long had a wonderful fifth grade project program that we call the Honors Project, where the fifth grade is engaging a three-month work, research-based project. It culminates in what we call the Honoring Night, a research paper, a presentation of their work, all around an intrinsically motivated theme. Mentors and community experts come in to support the children. Last year, the staff decided they want to look back from fifth grade back towards kindergarten to see how the project works in all the grades, and how we could scaffold that work towards that culminating event in fifth grade. So there was a common vocabulary that really developed around how to research, how to present work, how to develop a bibliography reference and so on, which stretched all the way back to kindergarten. Special education, as part of the growth in the school, we needed to add a special education teacher at the intermediate level. I think as a result of that, we've now got two excellent special education teachers, and there's a real intentional coordination with the classroom teachers. We're really looking at an inclusion model as part of the theme of the school as much as we can, and always seeking to provide an instructional, least restrictive environment. Increasing that team helped with that. And finance, of course, always a phony topic, I'll say that till last. Prairie Creek's fortunate, I think, in the... Prairie Creek's fortunate, I think, in, and under the great stewardship of Caroline Jones and boards past have, have built up an impressive fund balance over the years, which has enabled them to support the growth project and also maintain staffing levels and keep the class size low, always aggressively meeting the fund balance policy recommended by our auditors. An additional move last year, which I thought was a, a very sound decision was to add a part-time chief financial officer, who's also an ex-officio member of our school board. That's Keith Johnson, who's very experienced and skilled in charter school finance. And he's, he's been given a more strategic flavor to the discussions around finance as we look forward to the 40% holdback and how we're going to tackle that. Challenges or opportunities? Well, one identified last year by the program was the need to build stronger connections between the school board and the faculty. And I actually have one of our school members here tonight, I neglected to introduce at the beginning, Bonnie Jean Flarm is our vice chair and community board members. I will be hosting a board faculty retreat in, in November, coming up in a couple of weeks, really to revisit the school mission and spend some time looking at the program historically and where we're going moving forward. And we wish to also reinvigorate our board committee system. We've, we've got a system of committees and really expect teachers and board members to engage in that committee work and it's a way to bring the community in as well. We'll also be looking at how the challenge of communication with families in the digital age, I think, like all schools, we're looking at initiatives to improve our website, add more correspondence by email. All my newsletters are now emailed out to families, electronic newsletters from classroom teachers. And we have at least three classrooms now. We really host an excellent classroom blog, which we're finding our families enjoy the, the more dynamic correspondence back and forth with as well. So we're looking to expand that throughout the school. Community development is another challenge. We've had the increased size of the school to deal with, as mentioned before. So we, we have many traditions at the school, which we look to maintain going forward. And now we're looking at how can we ensure families are part of that history and continue to find ways to connect with the school. And of course, the multi-age piece, which I mentioned earlier, and we'll be focusing on that for our goal work. Staff development, as I mentioned before, our staff doesn't have a formal PLC system in the way that the district here does. We don't have a late start on Wednesday, but we actually choose to meet every Wednesday afternoon after school is out for two hours for a weekly professional development. This for me is one of the most exciting things about the school. It's a, it's a phenomenal collegial atmosphere. We work on developing goals and focus areas together early in the year and a week before school begins. And this is an incredibly committed community of learners. The staff, I think, are really very excited to be here twice a week. We, we link our work to our mission, what progressive education looks like in 2011. We link it to the work we need to do in regard to meeting a standards-based education in a different setting. And the staff are very much the teacher leaders in this role. They bring the weekly sessions on a schedule throughout the year. And as you can see, our primary areas this year will focus in on our accountability goals. That's just a snapshot of the group working together there. School finance, as mentioned before, we've kept an aggressive fund balance, which has increased in the last three years. Despite the rather frightening anticipated holdback of 40%, we do expect to be able to meet cash flow from reserves, which I think puts us in a fairly exceptional position for charter schools, many of whom, and that's been my experience in recent years too, are having to borrow in order to maintain cash flow. Chief financial officer and the, and the finance committee are anticipating that with the work we've done in the past few years, we won't need to do that. Our fund balance at the end of June, the initial audit results showed a balance of 27.5%. And with the sequence of the payments back, we should be able to manage cash flow. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Thanks very much, Simon. Anyone have questions? Julie or Y'all?
Yeah.
So Simon, a few of us were able to visit the school last year and one of the things that Caroline Jones had talked about were some of these math assessment pieces and some of the new things that were being tried. And I was just curious of the MCA three, if you had a sense of, with some of these formative assessments and the work sampling is how, you mentioned that the reading correlated really well with the MCA.
Yeah, sure.
If you have a sense of the, if the math, the new things that you're doing, if that's going to correlate better with some of the standardized testing?
You know, you know, that's a really good question. I mean, I think the, the challenge of the standardized testing, and I know there's been a lot of work done with the MCA test from MCA two to MCA three to try and make it more of a diagnostic tool that will give us data back a lot quicker. And I, I hope that turns out to be the case. I think it is a snapshot. I do think it's only one piece of assessment that we have to use. I, I think our formative assessment has to start day one and move through the year with the children. But, but I do believe this, that if we are teaching math for understanding and we are teaching at a, the level of excellence I think we all aspire to, that the children will do okay on standardized tests and they will continue to improve their standardized test scores. I think like all districts this year, we felt the shift from the MCA two to the MCA three. I mean, I think there was a quite dramatic percentage drop at the state level. I don't know how it was in the, in the Northfield traditional schools, but we experienced that as well. That's why I think the third grade results were so encouraging. I do anticipate that the children will adapt to them going forward as well. If I have a concern about the test itself and my observations of it and looking at the samples, I do think it's a limited assessment in terms of just what it is assessing in math. We, we do teach for understanding on, on a timed, fairly short assessment. It tends to be more multiple choice based, more, more an assessment of acquired knowledge rather than that deeper understanding of math concepts. So we're hopeful we can be successful in both regards. We've worked with our children and our families to, to provide a foundational math knowledge base, but keep our mission-based focus on critical thinking and problem solving and really having a lot of fun with math too. And hopefully that will correlate to success on standardized tests as well.
Anyone else? Questions? Thank you very much, Simon.
You're welcome.
I might put this down and do a manual job here. Good evening. Thank you for having me here today. I'm here to report to you Greenville Park's school improvement plan for reading that we prepared for the Minnesota Department of Education per the requirements of needs improvement and adequate yearly progress. To make a distinction, this is not our school improvement plan for the district. This is for the state and we're looking for approval for our plan for reading therefore. Greenville Park made adequate yearly progress in reading this year in every demographic. And there was some fear and trepidation that we would move into corrective action stage three point one. And because we did make, and I'll show you later on, the, what we refer to as AIP status page, because we made adequate yearly progress in every demographic, we're in stage two point two. So we've been tweaking the plan that we thought we were going to have to write for corrective action and changing it to what would be the requirement for two point two. So the good news is that Greenville Park, in terms of reading, is we made AIP after three years consecutively of having a demographic in needs improvement for reading. And so there was some good news this year for us. What I'd like to do this evening is just kind of walk you through, I know you have the plan in front of you. And Mike, to, to encourage you, my, my slide show is only 18 slides, so I'm not going to be going long today. We'll have a lot of other news for you when we do the school improvement plan for the district. So what I'd like to do is just walk you through the, what I felt were the important pieces for you to know. We met today as a site council and we tweaked it somewhat and just small edits. And so what you have in front of you is essentially the plan, if I forgot a comma or something like that. The one significant edit we did make today was that I rewrote the SMART goals in the form of index rate instead of straight percentage. And I'll explain that later on what that means. So if you just kind of draw your attention to section number two, it's called the executive summary. There's a lot of information in the document in front of you, but the highlight essentially is what the demographic data is of our school and how over the course of two years, we've had some changes. And you'll see when I get to the free reduced and Hispanic and Latino population graphs of reading achievement over the past six years, you'll see a real trend in terms of some other things as well. But the demographic data at Greenville Park, in a nutshell, didn't change greatly. We had a brief, or a small increase in free reduced from 39% of free reduced plan program for students to 41%. Special education was up 1%. Limited English proficiency stayed the same. Our Caucasian population went down a percent. Our Hispanic population, which looks like the, the significant gain was up 2% over the course of that year period. And our, our black population down one and Asian population up one. So we've got some balance there in terms of our diversity. So the real highlight here is that we did go up in two percentage points for our Hispanic population and that was really the demographic change apart from the poverty. Okay? And then the other information is there for you to peruse at your leisure. I'll go to the needs assessment, that's section three in the plan. And in our needs assessment, we decided that after reviewing our needs assessment from 2009, where we first began looking at, you know, what are the schools' needs in terms of our demographics of, at that time was Hispanic, Latino, free reduced price lunch. And it was actually special ed when we first went into reading for needs improvement. We went back and reviewed our needs assessment and we agreed that the, the three areas that we still need some work and really need to continue to work on are these three areas. And a scale of one to five, one being low, we rated ourselves, again, we continued to rate our, our school with a rating of one in terms of having a school-wide approach for supporting our population of poverty and reading. We thought that we self-rated our school in terms of a two in the area of not having a system-wide approach for gathering and using the information about families and a rating of three for being a school and developing methods for addressing the diverse learning levels and styles of our population of poverty while maintaining the rigor of reading curriculum. We actually rated ourselves up one from the year before there in a three. So in our self-rating system, we've found some level of success in reading because we did make it out of needs improvement in reading. We made adequate progress in every demographic. But our, our primary concern right now is that system-wide approach to supporting our population of poverty and reading. And the plan that you had in front of you, we feel is a very good plan for this. It's scaled down. One of our greatest challenges at Greenville Park is the creativity and the problem solving. If you remember, do you remember two years ago, the list I gave you of all those parental involvement strategies we had? Well, one of the great challenges is a lot of them are dying in the vine because we don't have the people, the resources at the time to implement. And so what we did this year is really scaled back on the number of strategies we're going to use to try and have an impact in the hopes that being laser focused will get us a better result. And we believe that as we did implement our plan from the past three years, we noticed that we were getting scaled back, scaled back. And one of the reasons why we believe we were successful is because we did become a lot more focused in fewer areas. And that predominantly came out of our professional learning communities and the work of the professional learning community. That's what we really started to focus on. So the plan you have in front of you, and I'll get to this a little bit later, and the action plan, really stems from our professional learning communities and what we're learning about kids there and what we're looking, when we're learning about the data in terms of our, our reading achievement there. So, and then the other piece that I want to talk about in terms of our needs assessment is that when you look at the data, and you can get this on the website, Minnesota Department of Education website, I really like this graph. This is Mike's graph because he always wanted to go back and see, well, how's it been over the course of years? You can see that over the course of the past five years, we've had some real steady growth in free reduced price lunch and we continue to rise over the past five years until we got to about 71% in terms of index rate points. I'll talk about that later on. It's not a straight 71% of our students passing the test, it's index rate points. And so we've had some really good growth. And so when we look at the data in terms of needs assessment, needs assessment isn't just bad news, it's also good news in terms of our free reduced population. That's a very good growth. Some other good news, we didn't have to put our Hispanic and our LEP population in the plan because we weren't in needs improvement in those two areas, but I just want to share with you some other good news. You'll notice over the past five years also, we've had some very, very good growth in our, our Latino population in reading as well. And you can see we're upward around, I think it's like 55, 55 index rate points there. And then we had just a, whoop, somebody fell off. You can see up at the top there, just a little bit of a 2% of a, of a decrease in our LEP population. And yeah, we still made adequate yearly progress in, in LEP as well. So if, in the needs assessment packet, you can kind of see there's a brief explanation of what we'll do to bring about increased achievement. We anticipated corrective action and corrective action would have required one or, or more of these six steps that they provide for you that you have to do differently now because you had your opportunity. And in fact, Dr. Richardson and I have been to a number of workshops at Southeast Service Cooperative. And one of the things that we were getting ready for in terms of possibly being in corrective action was having to implement one or more of these six steps that are now required. In corrective action, the school has less autonomy and the district has more autonomy. And as I'm sure Dr. Richardson has explained to you, even as you move forward to restructuring, the school has less autonomy and the district and the school board has more autonomy. So of the six changes, we essentially are changing three things. And this is our brief explanation about how we're going to bring about that increased achievement. We've made three changes. We're making some curricular changes and we're getting real focused in on one thing. And it, it sounds almost too colloquial to be like in a professional plan, but what we're actually going to be focusing in on is increasing reading engagement. Because the, the one incontrovertible piece of, or statistic on all successful reading programs since the 1950s to today is that all, regardless of what the program is, all successful reading programs get kids to read. And if it doesn't get a child to read, it's not a successful reading program. You don't get good results. And that's why you can have old Reinhardt successful in Tampa Bay, but not in Dayton, Ohio. It really comes down to our children engaged in reading. And so one of our curriculum changes is, and I'll, I'll talk about this, how we're going to measure this later on, is reading engagement. We also started talking a little bit about vocabulary expansion and word recognition, particularly for our second language kids, as being a real important piece. We've got an outside expert to provide training for our LEP Title I and literacy coaching staff. That job embedded staff development is going to create job embedded staff developers in our building. And the people that we will use will be the literacy coaching staff and our Title I people, which there's a little bit of a, an overlap. And then the third piece that we did in terms of bringing about increased achievement that would have been required for corrective action is we've added a key LEP staff member. We were able to hire someone who's had some level of experience in terms of a push-in and a co-teaching model in another district. And she's brought some real neat skills and has a, a real nice skill set in that area. And so that's one of the other changes that we made. If you can draw your attention to section four, this is the big part of the plan. There's a number of things that we have to do here and just going to draw attention to a few of them. You have the rest in front of you. Challenges that we felt prevented us from making adequate progress were the coordination and implementation of reading interventions. And so we're really going to start looking at, and we're doing the district by plan right now, we're going to really start looking at, without naming RTI, we're going to start looking at some real RTI strategies in terms of what reading interventions are going to be meaningful to kids to help them be more proficient in reading program. One of the other challenges that we have is the coordination and allocation of reading support services. We have a lot of students who can qualify for Title I in reading and in math. And currently, the title grant this year allows us to use title funds to teach reading to grades one, two, and three, and math in three, four, five. And it's a little bit of a change. It was reading last year only. And coordinating that support and working out the schedules is, is kind of a bugaboo in making sure that we're identifying the kids who need the help. So that's also been a challenge. And then family communication and involvement for families of free reduced price lunches. And we'll get to that. We still have, the longest list I have is still parent involvement. So that's six, but we, we cut back. Our fixed targets for 100% proficiency, this is notable because you'll notice in two, for instance, I, I put the LEP and Hispanic up here, didn't have to, but just to show you what our plans are in the free reduced area, in 2012, these are index rate, actually, this is the high bar right now. We need, and for 2012, we're going to need an index rate of 88%. And we have 71% right now. So this is going to take a sharp increase. But if we make the 88%, that's the high bar. Okay? So we can still make safe harbor if you don't make 88%. We left in the high bar because we weren't going to have a choice. You don't get to say you're not going to make the high bar. You don't get to say you're not going to make the high bar, so that's the high bar. And this is the graph that we've been using that Roger created for us in 2009, I think we first went in. Now, in terms of annual measurable goals, I've been talking about index rate, and here's where I'm going to really kind of show you what this means. If you'll notice, let's see if I can maybe get this thing to work. Here we go. The index rate right here is what we're setting our goals on, and how I reframed our goals is according to index rates. My original goals that you have in the plan says straight percentages, all right? And it occurred to me that, for instance, in free-reduced lunch, you'll notice here, as I say, 71.35 is the index rate for the past year in reading in free and reduced. And what that essentially means is that for every student who exceeded the test, we got a point. If they met the standards, we got a point. If they partially met, you got a half a point. So it's not a straight percentage. You add up all your points, and then you divide by the number of students here who took the test, and this is what you get. So it's an index rate. And one of the reasons why we're sticking with the MCA in terms of our SMART goals A is because in the day, do you remember the day when a teacher taught, and it was a unit on, say, rational numbers? We decided for accountability and statewide tests, we decided what the objectives were that were important, we taught them. And then at the end of the unit, we tested what we taught. Well, one of the reasons why we're sticking with index rates is because the curriculum in Northfield are K-12 academic standards. That's the rational number. Those are the objectives that are important. We use literacy by design, everyday math to support that, but the curriculum are the standards. And it's important in our mind that if we're going to teach the standards, we need to have a measuring stick to find out how they did, just like you tested rational numbers to find out if they made it. And so we're sticking with that in terms of our SMART goals. And the index rate is what we're using for our goals. The two Bs you see here are for math in Hispanic and limited English, which puts us in the shot-across-the-bow stage, that's stage zero. And we do not have to write a plan for math when you're in stage zero. You go from no stage to stage zero, which is now where we're at. We've been in safe harbor for math for three years now. So, and you've had a previous conversation as to why that is, so I won't touch on that. You'll hear that a lot, I think, over the course of the next month or so. Our annual measurable goal then for free-reduced is that the index rate will be 88 percent. Per that chart in 2012, this will require 17 percent growth increase. Currently, the index rate is 71 percent for free-reduced. So we're going to shoot for the high bar. And tracking our goal progress, this is where, this is actually where the fun comes in. We met today and we talked about this. And we tried to scrape away all the creativity and the critical thinking and all the great numerous ideas, and really just got down to what we thought was going to be the best way to figure out whether or not our kids are making it in reading. And so we've got our formative assessments with the Greenville Park. We've been doing them for a number of years now. We have, this is a big one. We have a weekly student reflective reading log. We also have our monthly main idea rubric. You've seen presentations on that from our PLCs. And this year, we have universal screening in terms of oral fluency assessments. Here's the good news about this. You know, there's always some debate about oral fluency and whether or not there's a correlation between comprehension. Is that great debate? We determined who our students were in grades one, two, three this year in terms of being eligible for Title I initially based on the DRA. Then we did the universal screening that all of the elementary schools are doing for oral fluency, and there was a very, very high, high 90s correlation between who didn't make the benchmark with the fluency and who had a low DRA and was qualifying for Title I. And so the good news is, is we're on the right track with the universal screening and the oral fluency. Where we're going to spend a lot of time is right here on this reading log. Because one of the things that we feel is really important, once again, is that if a child's not reading, they're not going to become a better reader. Well, we've got pretty good control over that at school. Kids read. I mean, when you come to Greenville Park and you go to a classroom where it's reading time, it's readers' workshop time, and the teacher's meeting with groups, and everybody's back at independent reading time, everybody's reading independently. It's not, doesn't get any better than it really is right now, except for maybe a few kids we've got to keep track of. Where we really see the biggest potential for growth here is when they're not in school. And it's great, one of the great challenges in any home, a lot of homes often, is are our students reading at home? And one of the ways we're going to track that and measure that is with a reading log. Okay? And we just got finished today agreeing that, and we're going to meet on Wednesday this week, all the K-5 teacher teams. We just agreed today that we really think that, just the same as it is for discipline, we've got consistent expectations, it's a system-wide approach. K-5 does the same thing. You know, a kid doesn't have to figure out the first six weeks of school what the discipline plan is because it was the same way it was last year. We're going to talk about a common reading log and a book in the bag that it looks a lot alike, no matter what grade level you're going to, so that the folks, over the course of six years, no matter where you go, you go in the bag, the book bag, or the backpack, you're going to know what it looks like and to take it out, and it'll have that reading log in it. We're going to really carefully track who isn't, who isn't, and then we're going to focus in on our students who are not. If a child reads 20 minutes a day, every day, research says that, they will grow one year. So what we're looking at is closing the gap. And one of the things that our teams are doing right now on the reading logs is teachers are giving kids prescriptions for reading. Your prescription is 30 minutes. It might include what happened in school and at home and a combination of things, but another child might have 20, another child might have 60, but we've given prescriptions to kids because we know that we can close the gap if students are engaged more in reading. We'll continue to use, you know these, I won't spend a lot of time on this, the these summative assessments as well for tracking our progress. Our scientifically-based strategies for continuing to strengthen our core reading program are still going to be coordination and implementation of reading interventions, and I've talked about these earlier. I won't spend a lot of time on that. The reason why they're scientifically-based is because you can measure these, and we're going to measure these as we go along. And then the fun parent involvement strategies. Greenville Park has three parent liaisons for a total of 39 hours and a combination of ours. Okay? And one of the things that we're doing is we're making sure that we're communicating in the community the good news about our students at Greenville Park, about the reading program. If you've seen the Northfield News and northfieldpass.com, we're really making sure that we're getting the good news out about what we're doing at the school. Communicating the success of our free-reduced students with the outside media and all students is one of our parent involvement strategies. I'll go backwards since I started at the bottom. Increasing student engagement in reading for this particular demographic of students through the reading goal setting and student recognition. Our parent liaisons are working with teachers, and we're going to start helping students in that demographic set goals for themselves for reading. And then we're going to recognize them at our building-wide monthly meetings where we recognize students for setting a goal, persevering, and succeeding. Parent liaisons are also working with, communicating with teachers of free-reduced students to assess the communication with parents relative to the weekly reading log. Where we find sometimes where we're not getting that reading log back is because the folks at home aren't aware of it, they don't know about it. And we're going to try and educate our parents and our parent, the liaisons are going to help us with that. Our fourth strategy is going to be increased accessibility of general school-wide information by improving communication infrastructure in Spanish. We not only have 26 percent Latino, but we're a Spanish immersion program, and so we're going to increase signage in Spanish, translations in Spanish and so forth, and try and get some real neat parent involvement through helping people access language if they don't speak English. Strategy five will be create opportunity for free-reduced parents to participate in a communication team with the principal. This was on that long, 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 long list, and we had a fellow from Pacer come out and kind of assess our program last spring, and one of the things he said was that you've got a lot of good things going on. One thing that you should probably do is create some level of a communication team with the demographic where you have some concerns in terms of student achievement in reading. So we're going to do that this year. And then working with teachers and administrators and other school staff to determine community and parent volunteer needs for free-reduced parents. Those are the six things that our parent liaisons are working on in terms of parent involvement strategies in our AYP plan. So section six is the School Improvement Action Plan. And you've got it in front of you. The notable change would be this piece right here and this piece right here. We talked about this and made a final today, and we just combined the languages, essentially what we did. So you've kind of seen this. But our three primary action steps are professional learning communities to foster literacy independence. One of our primary goals is going to be to help students self-select books because they don't get engaged unless they're reading something that they want to read. So we're going to really work hard on helping students self-select. Well, in order for a student to self-select, you've got to have lots of choices. And anyone who's raised their own kids know, I mean, in my own house, it's really hard to sometimes get a hesitant reader to read unless they've got something that they really, really, really want to read. So students self-selecting will be an important part of this, and we're going to measure that in our PLCs in the manner in which you see here. Our primary plan, our big picture plan right now is going to be to level the entire media center so that every single book in the media center is leveled. So if a student knows what level they are reading, I don't have to buy 250,000 books over the next 45 years. I have them in the media center. And it occurred to us that if we leveled the media center, we just bought 250,000 or whatever number of books we've got. So we're going to really work hard on helping students self-select, and that's what we're going to be one of our strategies. Another one of our action steps will be teacher mentoring. We're going to work on a coaching model with our literacy coaches and our outside consultant. Our outside consultant is going to work with our staff, not just literacy coaches, but ESL staff and the site council to create kind of, because we don't have a teacher mentoring department, obviously. And one of the things that occurred to us is that we've got our literacy coaches, we've got our academic coaches. If we give them that job-embedded staff development, they are now the job-embedded staff developers. And their primary responsibility in teacher mentoring will be following through on these strategies for kids and making sure that teachers all have strategies for teaching these strategies to kids. It's going to be, it'll be a job-embedded staff development model. And then our parent, our action step three is our parent-student community communication. This is going to be that reading log, and we're going to monitor the students' progress there. And we're going to look for feedback from parents as well in those weekly reading logs. And some of them are daily, actually. Those weekly reading logs will include weekly communication through writing, phone, or in person, as well as the log. And so we're going to try a variety of things, try and get kids engaged. And there's our graphic organizer that essentially outlines what you just saw on the previous page. There's your narrative, and then this is what it looks like so that when someone at Greenville Park who didn't spend the last three months writing the plan with us asks what's the plan, we've got, I've got about half a dozen of these we're going to put up in the building so that the folks in the building can say this is the plan. And our primary strategies are down here. And improvement in reading is the goal, and we're going to do that through that communication assessment. And you can read, so I'm not going to read the whole thing to you. So those will be posted as well. And that's it for reading. That makes sense.
Thanks very much. I like having the picture to go with all the gestures.
I selfishly made that for me because I'm a visual person, so.
Yeah, that's good. Very interesting report. Anyone have questions for Dave? Julie?
I just have a comment. I think it's, the plan is very well done, and I congratulate you on taking the honest assessment of where you were and where you need to go. And sometimes that's not always easy. Really well done.
Yeah, thank you. We really scaled back. As you know, you've seen them all. You've seen all of our plans.
Yeah, but it's very exciting to see the amazing progress that you've made. And congratulations on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else?
I just think it's really important to know, too, that the Greenville Park staff and Dave have really taken on the challenge. In other words, they, as Dave said earlier, they thought they were going to be in corrective action this fall, which is kind of the next deeper step. And obviously, instead, actually made adequate early progress in the areas where they would have gone into corrective action. And now, kind of like whack-a-mole, they've moved to a new set of areas where they're needing to work. But I think that the real focus is that Dave and his staff have sat down and said, what does this new AYP plan need to look like? What are the, what are the core elements? How do we make less be more? And I think you really see less is more here. And what you need to know is that the plan that Dave's put together and is sharing with us is also one that's getting shared at Southeast Service Co-op with all the other staff that are working on their plans. And of course, there are about 50-some buildings and districts now in Southeast Service Co-op that are working on plans. But Dave's plan is basically being looked at as kind of a model of, this is the way it's supposed to look. And one of the key a-has, I think, in terms of Dave's work and the work of his staff has been identifying that you create the, really do it backwards. You know, always in the past, you were supposed to work on your goals, then you set your strategies, then you move through all these steps, and finally, you create your action plan. And I think, I think Dave and his team figured out, well, what you really need to do is figure out what are the core actions going to be. Generate the key action steps under those strategies and play that piece out. And then, basically, the rest of the plan actually kind of builds itself. And now that's being used as the direction and the strategy for other districts and other buildings to use. So again, I really appreciate his leadership in this. I think he's really stepped forward with his staff, and I think his staff has really made the commitment to try to put this together and really make positive change. And, you know, as much as I think we're all frustrated with NCLB and its current format, I think there's some great things happening with this that are really going to help us to support the kids that we need to support who are struggling with being able to be successful. And I think the staff is really seeing how, instead of doing kind of, let's use a shotgun and kind of blast all in hopes something sticks, it's, you heard him talk about, about 10 times tonight, about laser focus, and where we're down to just really tight strategies and let's figure out how do we implement those strategies every single day to make a difference for kids. So I think publicly, I just want to congratulate Dave and Greenville Park because they have really worked to kind of put themselves on the map in terms of doing it right. And frankly, we're going to steal everything that works for him, and we're going to work on how we make that happen for the district. So again, very much appreciate the work that Dave and staff members have done to get this piece ready to go and be ahead of the curve.
Well, then on behalf of my teachers and families, and you know, you never hear about the children. You don't get student achievement without children working hard, and so on behalf of them as well. We thank you. That was very nice. I will, I will say this, though, too. You know, it was a lot easier, as Chris explained, start in the back and do the action plan first and then back map it. But it wouldn't have been that easy had it not been for the primary strategy that we're using, and that's professional learning communities. And for that, the board's vision, superintendent's vision, school district's vision for actually implementing that is really responsible for it. So just kudos come back as well.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our first item for individual action is, as Ray and Dre mentioned, as Dr. Richardson did at the beginning of the meeting, we have the 2011-13 agreement with the Northfield Education Association.
Sure. And again, just in a brief piece here, I would just like to share, because this will be the core of the news release that will be shared with all the news media in the coming days. Again, we have come, I think, to a very good place in terms of the negotiation process. It has been because of the hard work of our own team in terms of administrators and board members and also the teacher's team, really sitting down, really listening to each other, really thinking about what was important, really hearing what was important to the other side, and then really putting that process together. The plan itself basically is one that reflects a clear knowledge that in 2009-11 that the teachers and every other employee group stepped up to the table and said, we understand, we need to look at zero-based salary increases, we need to look at no steps, we need to look at very limited kinds of increases in terms of insurance. And because of that, we have continued to position ourselves where the level of cuts we've had to make in comparison to our neighbors has been small. The agreement going forward for 2011-13 really is kind of three key pieces. First, it's a 1 percent increase in each year in terms of the base salary. So for a new teacher who's at the first step, that's basically $350 on the base. But there would be a 1 percent increase in each year on each step. The second piece- The second piece would be that we would be, look at lifting the two-year freeze on steps beginning with the 2011-12 school year. So beginning with this year, basically, the steps would be reinstituted. And so individuals who were able to move through steps will begin to be able to move through those steps again going forward in this next two years. And then the third piece is some modification to the level of the district's contribution to insurance. And the focus really there was in the first year to try to get the level of payment of insurance back to the ratio that we'd seen over the last ten years between how much the district pays in terms of a contribution as opposed to how much the teaching staff pays a contribution. And the increase, which is three percent in the contribution rate, simply gets that to happen, gets us back on target in terms of that percentage. And then in the second year, we have negotiated a piece that would say, we will take a look at what the increase is, and we will look at sharing the risk during that second year as to the insurance increase, again, on a capped or limited basis. But if there is some increase in the insurance, then the district will be willing to step up and pay a share of that increased percentage up to a cap. And again, with the thought there that what we want to do is to be in a position where we don't see what happened in the second year of this last contract, where we saw teachers basically taking, if they were taking family insurance, basically taking a two-thousand-dollar cut in salary because that was the additional cost of insurance in the second year with a twelve or thirteen percent increase. Our great hope is that with the self-insured plan and moving forward with that, that we're going to see a much more controlled level of increase in the second year. And based on the sharing concept, we could have as little as no increase in terms of cost if insurance didn't go up, and then, again, a capped increase if it does. So again, those are really the key components, one percent in each year on the base, a lifting of the restriction in terms of allowing steps to move again, and then this very controlled level of increase in terms of insurance going forward. Again, we feel that the staff has done a good job of coming to us and taking a look at what they needed and sharing with us what they needed. I think we, I hope, did a good job of sharing what we felt needed to happen as part of the process. And I guess we feel this is a modest increase, but one that reflects our times and reflects the needs to support our staff because they are the rubber that meets the road every day with kids. And we need to make sure that we are continuing to support them as we go forward. So that's basically the information about the proposal.
Okay, thanks very much. I would just like to add my thanks to the negotiating team on the administrative side, Matt Hillman, Molly Beasley, Stephanie Shawback, Dr. Richardson. Noel, Ann Maple, and I were part of that. And the association team did a great job. I think, as I mentioned before, it was very productive, very professional, very thoughtful discussions that led to this, that led to this settlement. And, and I'd also like to thank the whole board. We did have a number of closed negotiation strategy sessions where every single person on this board really wrestled with what was both fair to the employees and also appropriate given the district's financial circumstances. We had very good, very thoughtful discussions about this. And, and I think, as Ray Kudry said, you know, we reached a very fair and reasonable agreement. So with that, I guess I'd ask for a motion in support of the, to approve the master agreement. So moved by Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Noel, the motion in person. Give it to Noel. Anyone have any discussion items or questions? Anybody?
Just that, pretty much, this was all about what we kind of talked about, then? Wasn't really any surprises?
No, it's, it's basically exactly as we've looked at, at the proposals over the last several months. And nothing really has changed from the last negotiation session where we shared the last set of proposals with you. I think, again, the thing that we will work, work on at this point is, once this agreement is ratified, then we will work to get the new agreement in place. And it will take a little while to do because we've already started the school year at the existing salaries, benefits levels, and so on. And so those things will have to be adjusted over the course of probably the next month or so as we move forward. But yes, everything is just as we left it at the last discussion, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of approving that agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And I just want to mention, Ann Maple is not here tonight. She was part of that, of the team that worked on this, and I know that she does support this, although she was stuck in an airport and not able to make it to the meetings. Thank you all very much. The second item we have is, it's in the form of a resolution, and it's a resolution authorizing the high school administration to apply for a Minnesota State High School League Foundation grant to be used for students who are unable to pay activities fees to participate in Northville High School athletic programs. So you have the formal resolution in your packet, and I'd ask for a motion to approve that resolution as presented.
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. Then you speak real cold, okay?
Aye.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Iverson.
Aye.
Fossum.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you. Then we have the consent grouping. And I would just note, there are a number of items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anybody would like to pull from the consent grouping? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? So moved by Ellen. Second by Noel. Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Future meetings coming up, I do note that on Monday, November fourteenth, at six-thirty, we'll have the reception for our many national merit scholars and commended students. It's always a wonderful event, and we're fortunate to be in a school district that can hold that kind of event every year because we do have so many honored students. So our regular meeting will start at seven-thirty on Monday, November fourteenth. And then we do not have a second meeting in November.
No, you do have a November twenty-eighth meeting. I omitted that from November.
Okay, thank you very much. So the second meeting in November will be on the twenty-eighth. And then we've got just the one meeting in December, on December twelfth, right?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else? Just would like to remind members of the, citizens of the school district to please vote on the two levy questions on November eighth. It's important that we hear from the community. This board has looked very carefully and thoughtfully and long-range at the financial picture of this school district. And with reluctance but great concern to be able to maintain the quality programming in this district, we've decided to put before the citizens of the community these two questions. And I do hope that you are taking time to educate yourself about these questions and that you understand the significance of your vote. A yes vote on those two questions will enable us to preserve the high-quality programming this community expects for its children. A no vote will not. A no vote will really dramatically change the tenure of this district. I hope folks will take time to think very seriously about that, and I do hope that you will support the levy questions. With that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.